I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I remind everyone that the meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14, and remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of the meeting to notify me as chair and I will inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. So we're going to start with our school choice video. So this was Ryan's creation, right? I hope that's already got a screen screen video, I think. Ryan, come make it work!
He just put it on.
That's a great screensaver though, since the Falmouth Track Team started today. So that's a good segue.
Nice. He's here. Saved the day. Love it.
It's only snow.
There we go. Thank you.
I chose Falmouth High School because there are opportunities here that no other school can keep at.
I chose Falmouth High School because being a Clipper really does mean one town, one family.
Across the Commonwealth, students are making Falmouth High School their choice. To learn more, go to falmouthps.org.
Yay! Do we know where it's airing? I know it's on our website and Facebook. Is it then on TV?
Yes, it's via Comcast.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thanks, Ryan. It's beautiful, as always. We'll open public comment. Anyone here for public comment? All right, next we have our student advisory report. Can you introduce yourself again for some people that weren't here and fill us in on what's going on?
I'm Philip Gessen. I'm a sophomore at Falmouth High School. So far, the new updates, the recent things that happened, we just had senior semi last weekend, and 130 students out of 190 turned up, so everybody had fun. We also, spring sports started today, so that's a big thing. I'm playing tennis myself, but there's also track, baseball, and sailing that's going on right now. Then, I'm part of the math team, and so far we're third in the division on the Cape, and we're fighting our way up into first place. Yeah, that's all for the less serious stuff, but then also, oh yeah, we also have a Spanish exchange program that we're planning next March. That's gonna, so students are gonna go to Spain for two weeks, go into a Spanish school, live with a Spanish family, and then the kids who we stayed with are gonna come back with us, and they're gonna stay in our homes for two weeks, and then it's gonna be like a, we're gonna integrate into the culture. And then, on a more serious note, the walkout. Since the walkout was canceled, we didn't have school on the 14th. We are holding a rally on the 24th, like a satellite march to the one in DC, and it's gonna include the whole Falmouth community, so any students who wanted to join the walkout during that time, during school can go, I think it's gonna be on the Village Green, and they can voice their opinions. And we're also having, there's one in Boston, and there's one in Hyannis being planned for anyone else on the Cape who wanted to, because Falmouth is pretty, more upper Cape, so anyone who wanted to go from the lower Cape could come to the Hyannis one. So then, also, I'm part of the State Student Advisory Council, and we're working on a, it's called, actually, I'm on the Regional and State Student Advisory Council, and we're both working on these two different weeks. One week is gonna be, they're both based off mental health, because that's one of the major problems that our generation has seen. For some reason, the kids like in high school right now, I think 60% have experienced depression at some time, and other mental health issues like anxiety and just stress, yeah. It's mostly stress-related, so we're trying to implement this Stress Less Week, which is gonna just teach students how to cope with it, how to exert yourself through physical activity, how actually, like eating healthy may actually increase your mental ability and increase your mood, make it better. So we're trying to, we're working with the Department of Health on this, ANDESI, to try to implement this program statewide. And, yeah, that's, oh, and then in student government, in local student government, we were discussing different, the potential civics project that might replace the MCAS, and student opinion pretty much holds that, yeah, we would much rather have a civics project rather than an MCAS issue in high school, yeah. And we talked about school safety, and that's pretty much it.
Do you know if there's a place where people can find out about the times and locations of the 24th marches?
Uh, yeah.
If somebody's trying to get more information about it?
I'm organizing the one in Hyannis. It's gonna be from 11 to 3, and I think we have a, we have a Facebook page.
Okay. Can you share, can you tell us what that is?
Yeah, it's March For Our Lives, Hyannis. Yeah. And then, I don't know if Falmouth has one, but I can get back to you on that.
Or if you can just, once you find the details, put it on the March For Our Lives, Hyannis, and then people will be able to find it.
Okay.
That would be great. Any questions?
Yes. So next March, in the Spanish exchange program?
Yep.
So you're gonna go to Spain for two weeks and spend two weeks with a family and a student, and then the next two weeks, so four weeks total?
So it's not gonna be, right after that?
Consecutive?
So it's gonna be during our vacation, we're gonna go to Spain, and then whenever they have vacation, it might not be right after.
Oh, okay.
But the student we stayed with is gonna come back to live with us, yeah.
So my question was, is it going to be consecutive?
Uh, it's not gonna be.
And we're not sure if it is yet?
Yeah.
I was just hopeful that everyone gets along. Everyone likes each other, because that's a long four weeks.
Yeah.
Walter?
Do they have enough indoor facilities for spring practice for all the sports?
Uh, yeah, so, right now, I don't know about spring sports right now, because they just started, so we haven't really experienced any issues, because today was orientation day. We just talked about what we're gonna do, we didn't actually practice. But during winter sports, we had enough, and I feel like winter sports would be more inside, like they would utilize more space inside than outdoor, than spring sports.
A lot of winter sports are inside anyway, right?
Yeah, exactly. So winter track, pretty much they're only practicing inside when it was too cold to practice outside, but that was with basketball there as well, and we had enough space to practice both, so.
I noticed they have the first contest on the 29th of March.
Yeah.
When I was an athletic director, I would never schedule anything before April for baseball.
Start.
So that gives them like 10 days of inside to get ready for an outdoor game?
Yeah.
That'll be, that'll be a challenge.
Well, the snow is gonna melt.
Eventually, just in time to get more.
Yeah. The snow may melt, but the ground still stays wet.
Yeah.
Well, maybe.
Any last questions for Philip?
Spring scheduling, a nightmare.
Thanks. I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Terry, I'm sorry. I know, sorry.
That's okay. I've learned to be gracious and make myself, I was watching on the news, some kids in Europe are getting hooked into the thing from the school in Florida, and there's a movement, have you heard any of that, or you?
We haven't really heard, well, I haven't really heard that much about the movement, the movement starting in Europe, but we're hoping that it's gonna get something done in the US.
Yeah, well, you seem to be a little bit more cosmopolitan, and so that's why I asked you.
Connected?
Connected, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, Bill.
One more. I appreciate you being here, I appreciate the time you gave us, and you did a really good job. Thank you.
Very thorough.
Well done.
It was great for me. Good point, thanks, thanks, Bill. Next up, we have Acting on Our New York City Field Trip for the arts.
I can speak to that a little bit, and we also have Steve Edwards, the department chair, here. Corinne Adams, an art teacher, is requesting the board's permission to take approximately 50 students to New York City for the annual art museum tour. The trip is scheduled for early in May, however, Ms. Adams wanted to comply with your request that the paperwork be submitted to you early, even though she doesn't have the exact date yet. So I thank her for that, and Mr. Edwards is certainly here to answer any of your questions.
Right, hi.
Hi, thanks for coming.
You're welcome. Yeah, thanks for having me. The itinerary should be there, and I just wanted to take a moment to explain some of the details. For example, Corinne plans on using Peanut Enterprises as the coach bus line. This is out of Mashpee, and they used them last year for the same trip. There'll be five chaperones, all of which will be Coryed. I believe Judy Fenwick has already confirmed that she's going on the trip. Students will be chaperoned outside the museums in MoMA and Met. They're gonna be expected to stay together. The cost is around $50 per student, based on last year's cost of the bus. This could increase or decrease by about $5, and we've been holding fundraisers throughout the year to make this trip affordable. We use fundraisers like Arts Alive. They've been selling crafts, they were selling pumpkins, and they had open mic night, and they just had Soup for the Soul. So we're not sure yet what the bottom line is, but we just wanted you to know how we're trying to make this trip available to all. And as I said, the itinerary is there, but if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. I just know that Corinne's been working real hard on the trip. Yes?
So I have a question about what not to bring a backpack. So is there a reason why students can't bring backpacks?
Because it would require us to search backpacks, to be honest with you. We'd wanna make sure that we know all of the materials that are coming on a trip, and Corinne may, I don't wanna put words in her mouth, but she may be thinking along those lines of making sure that the security is fully thorough, and that we don't have to worry about those kinds of things, sitting down and going through all the backpacks. You might remember when we've scheduled our band and chorus trips, we have a baggage check, and I don't think she wants to go through that, so no backpacks.
They might not be allowed to bring them in the museums.
In the museums.
And the museum might be an issue too, but I think she's talking about even the bus. She just doesn't wanna have them.
Yeah, so that means students would have to carry a different kind of bag?
They may be, they may be allowed small carry bags, like, you know, maybe even a, instead of a backpack, you know how they have like those little satchels? My son has one of those as well. They, little things, yes, they'll be allowed to carry.
Okay. Melissa, did you get something?
No, sorry.
What day of the week is it? Is it a weekend?
Well, we don't have the actual date yet.
I mean, is it a weekend, usually planned for a weekend or planned for a school day?
Uh, no, it's actually a school day.
It's a school day?
Typically.
And they get back at 11:00? And then, I'm just wondering if they're school the next day? That's basically what I wanna know.
Whenever students participate on a school field trip, they are expected to go to school if school is the next day. They are expected to participate.
Because I think they should stay longer in New York City and get back later. I'm sure, I'm sure Corinne would not appreciate that comment, but two hours in the Met is not enough.
Ah, for sure, for sure.
That's enough. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the New York City art field trip.
Second? Oh, sorry, go ahead. Who got it? John?
I'll second.
Thanks. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the National Artist Society field trip to New York City?
Aye.
And any abstentions? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Awesome.
We'll get you the date as soon as we have it.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Oops, I hid my agenda. Next up, we have acting on three donations for the science department.
Okay, so, these, the funds that have donated will be used to fund the marine ecology classes. Chris Brothers, Department Chair of Science, is here to speak to the donations.
So this is actually three donations. Two are from parents who work for ExxonMobil, and they arrange this through the gas station that they work at, has like a employee matching kind of fund. Those two grants are gonna be used for the STEM lab, and we have received that funding for about four or five years now. And then, the third grant is from the Salt Pond area bird sanctuary, so that's for $4,000. I should back up and say the two from ExxonMobil are $500 each. The one from Salt Pond is $4,000 total, and this, I think, is maybe the sixth year that we've received the money from them. They very generously have increased it from $2,500 to $3,000 to $4,000 over the last few years. And they specifically look for projects that are sort of environmental or nature-based, so that money is gonna be used for the marine ecology classes. They're gonna build an ocean drifter, which has a GPS satellite transmitter on it, and they did this two years ago, and they released the drifter, went out into the Atlantic Ocean, it was out there for about six months, they were able to follow it online, and then all of a sudden it disappeared. It got swallowed up in a hurricane. They were able to actually, you know, see that happen with the data that they were able to see online. So they're building another one this year, and that will be part of the grant. They also plan to take their ROV, the remotely operated underwater vehicle, over to, that they build in class, over to West Falmouth Harbor, and actually drive it underwater in the harbor. They got a couple of underwater cameras this year, so hopefully they're gonna be able to look at things underwater. And then, the third part of the grant will be to help sort of expand the pollinator gardens that we built last year as part of the Verne Pool project. So one of the issues we had there was trouble in getting water to the site, so we hope this year to use that money to help put in an irrigation system for the pollinator gardens, and add more plants. So that's what the money will be used for.
Questions?
So when you receive the money, do they ask for you to let them know what you're gonna use it for, or?
For the Salt Pond area, it's a grant, and we actually have to provide a narrative of what we're gonna use the money for, and then it goes to their board and they approve it. For the ExxonMobil, it's just the parents arrange for their employer to donate the money to us, but it has always gone to the STEM program.
Other questions? John?
No, just a suggestion with the ROV, maybe you could incorporate that with all the oyster beds that they have, in all seriousness, to try to
Yeah, yeah.
Track that progress or something, might be kind of a cool cross project.
Are there oyster beds in West Falmouth Harbor?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know, I didn't myself.
Millions, yeah.
Or if you can find out where I can get scallops, I would really appreciate that. Because they're really hard to find.
Would say at the grocery store.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Okay, so this might be for Patrick, actually. So that's a grant, then, the Salt Pond Sanctuary one? Now, this is under donations right now, is that?
Does that matter?
Matter?
I'm not sure. What is your question?
So because it's a grant, it's not a donation, does that matter?
This is a grant, so...
It says act on three donations. Okay.
Yeah, just that, same process. The fact that it's a private grant, as opposed to federal grants or entitlement grants, would be a different process.
Okay, so the donation process and the private grant process is the same?
Very similar, yes.
Thank you for my question. It was rattling in my head. Okay.
Anything else? Oh, sorry, John.
So then we should have the minutes at some point reflect that?
Yes.
That it says grant?
Yeah.
Right.
I should say it's not really
Is it a grant?
It's not really a competitive grant, because only Falmouth Academy and Falmouth High School can apply for it, so, yeah. Basically, they say, we wanna give you this money, tell us what you want to use it for, and we tell them what we wanna use it for, and then decide if they approve of that use or not. And they have approved this use.
Is it competitive between the academy and the school? Are they both received?
No, we both get the same amount.
So it's a donation straight up?
It's more, it's a donation.
It's a donation. They just wanna know what we're gonna do with it.
It's a donation.
Yeah.
So maybe we shouldn't call it.
So we can keep it.
I don't think we should. Next, it'll be a donation. Let's call it. Stick with it.
Okay, next year we'll put it down as a donation, I'm assuming, hopefully, Salt Pond, hopefully, that'll get it next year.
It says donation on there.
Yeah, it says donation right here on the agenda.
If they wanna call it grant, and they'll keep the money coming, it's fine, we'll figure it out.
They can call whatever they want, we're so appreciative, for sure.
Yeah, we'll change the wording.
Can we get a motion to, can we accept them both together? Or do we wanna do it separately? Oh, Terry, did you have a question?
No, no, I was just gonna make the motion.
You wanna do them separate?
I think we should.
Okay, so can I get a motion to accept the donation from Salt Pond Sanctuary?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation, which it says here, from the Salt Pond Sanctuary, for $4,000.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's great.
Any abstentions? Unanimous. And can I get a motion for the two ExxonMobil donations of $500?
I'll make a motion to accept the donations from Exxon, for two of them for $500.
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Another unanimous one. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's super generous, we really appreciate it. And thanks for taking the time to put together the project, so they would give it to us.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Do we have Mr. Brown?
While Brown is not here yet.
Okay, so we'll skip the recreation committee statement in the hopes that he arrives. We are rescheduled, so, you know, he might not have been available tonight, and move on to our presentation on the fields.
So thank you for this opportunity to let us speak to you about the work of the Fields Task Force and Planning Committee. I just would like to recognize a few of our members. We have, I'm always wanting to call you Dana. Derek Almeida, Dana was his father, who is the head coach of our football team, Falmouth High School. And we also have Lori Crenshaw, who is a community member. Carrie Shanahan, who is a phys ed teacher at T-Ticket School. They're here tonight, and thank you all for coming, I appreciate it. I know we threw you a curve by rescheduling, and that happens, but thank you for being here, and also thank you for your work that you've done with our committee. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to speak very quickly about the three different branches of this committee, and give the bulk of the time tonight to CDM Smith to talk about their work. So I'm gonna go quickly through these, you have the slides in your packet, so if you need to stop and ask any questions, please do so. Just a reminder that the goal of our work is based off the initial recommendation to the school committee back in April of 2017, to relocate the Falmouth High School football program and fields to the Falmouth High School campus. That's the beginning of our work. We had a very clear directive from the November town meeting, when we asked for the money to relook at the design plans, they were very clear that they wanted two pieces. One, to look at natural turf right alongside of artificial turf. And you can see that this note, this slide, came right from the language of the town meeting. Do you have everything? Do you have this?
I'm missing that packet. Is there an extra one?
Two extra ones.
Thank you, sorry.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, this is a different packet.
You can share that one with me, because I don't have that. Oh, that's better. It'll just help if you have it in front of you as I kinda go through it.
Thank you.
You can take a look at our membership, our community membership, and then our district Summary of action and the steps that we took, and the work that the committee put in on the dates, and the numbers of times that we met. These are the formal meetings, there were some just informal check-in meetings. If I'm going too fast, or if you have any questions, please stop me. We really tried to do a good job continuing to communicate with the community through the community voices site on our website, and that is still open, just so you know. I don't think we've had anybody else respond since maybe the week before vacation.
Yes.
But we have had a good response to this. And so what I did is, in our community forums, I just walked people through so they knew how to access this on our website, because we really encouraged people to give us feedback. We divided the large group into three working groups. We had one subcommittee that really looked at, what is it that the community wants? Because there was some confusion around, what is it that Falmouth really wants? We had a health benefits and risks committee that really looked at and weighed benefits and risks, but also, based on a recommendation from a community member, went out and did site visits, and spent a lot of time talking with A.D.s, and really looking at other districts that had turf fields. And then the last part was really around the financial considerations and the design. So when we, when we thought about the community interest group, we looked at, okay, what do we wanna know? What is the essential question? And it really was, what was the community's priority? Was it around grass? Was it around turf? Was it around, do we need to do this? Does it need to be at Falmouth High School? So we crafted a survey to answer those questions, and we really wanted to understand what their priorities and their needs were. So as I said, we designed a survey, we pushed it out on our website, we let people know that it was out there. We had 550 responses, which we were really happy with. We thought that was a good turnout. And we started to look at, we asked, what was your gender? And you can see how many males, how many females, what percentage, and those who identify as non-binary. We looked at the ages of our respondents, and I thought this was interesting, that between 19, the age of 19 and 25, we only have set, had seven respondents, and that was only 1.3% of the total respondents. And then we started with the question, does Falmouth need a multipurpose field? Simple question, yes or no? And you can see that 94.2% said that we did, and we had 5.8% think that we did not. We asked if, if we needed a multipurpose field, did it belong at Falmouth High School? And you can see that 88.7% told us that it did belong at Falmouth High School. We asked if they preferred artificial turf to a grass field, and you can see the response there, that 62.8% looked, considered artificial turf as the answer, and 37.2 thought it should be grass. Then we asked if people had seen or played a sport on an artificial turf field. You can see those results. And then we wanted to know what the concerns about a natural turf field might be. And then we listed those responses. We asked the same question regarding an artificial turf field. And you can see the major concerns, health, safety, maintenance. We asked the question, what was valued in the scope of the project? Was the scope too large? Was it too small? What were the pieces in the scope of the project that people wanted to see happen? And you can see restrooms, concession, bleachers, locker rooms, parking, these were all of the concerns. We had a couple that were outside of the scope, which included a pool, a track, indoor athletic complex, outside of the scope of our project. Bob, come on in. Sharon, can we just get Bob? We're a little out of sequence, I hope that's okay.
No problem.
So again, this, this subcommittee was really trying to get some responses from the community. Come on in, Kathleen.
Okay, so remember Courtney's here.
Come on in, Courtney.
We'll grab a chair. You're welcome.
Our second subcommittee Our second subcommittee looked at health considerations. And Sonya actually chaired that part of the committee, so if you have any specific questions, she's here. And she also gave you a summary of the health benefits and risks by turf type, so you should have that in front of you. Do you have any questions on that? So just like with the community concerns, we asked, okay, what is, what's the essential question? What is it that we want to know from people? And again, it was the health benefits and risks for grass versus turf. You can see the purpose statement, and each group was asked to design a purpose statement. What were they looking for? Why were they doing this? And you can see what the statement for this group was. Here you have the environmental considerations for synthetic turf. You can see the benefits and the risks. Did the same thing for the natural turf. Synthetic injury-related considerations. Natural turf, the same thing. Am I going too fast? It's a lot of information, but we do really need to give CDM Smith some time, which is why I'm...
I mean, it's certainly too fast for me, but we get to keep this.
Yeah.
So, and we're not voting on this tonight.
You are not voting.
So, I think we'll just have to take our time to be able to take it all in, and then maybe have questions again.
It's a lot of work, yes. And again, the synthetic turf, the competitive advantage considerations.
Sonya, can you tell me, is this, this?
Yes.
Okay, there's no difference, so I don't need to be able to...
We'll be down in the segment.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I don't be extra.
And that's another reason I'm kind of going through these slides. It's a little harder on the slides because we can't put everything, which is why you have the placemat to look at.
Okay, thank you.
And then the natural turf competitive advantage considerations. Is there anything that jumps out at you immediately that we can answer now?
Can I ask a question? And maybe this isn't the right time to ask, but I'm wondering about this, the cleats, like, do you have to wear cleats on the turf?
So, when we did our site visits, that was actually one of the things that we were cautioned against, was not walking on the turf field with flat-soled shoes, but to actually have a spike or a cleat, because you compact the material over time if you consistently walk the flat shoes.
Okay, so that would be a requirement on the field?
But they're smaller than on the natural grass.
Most players will just use the same kind. They'll use what they wear on grass.
Okay, same kind of...
There are some kids that'll maybe have one pair for turf and one for grass, but there's really very little difference. You can't play with any shoe on.
Okay.
I'm thinking of, thinking ahead, in the event that the artificial turf goes through and halftime with band performances. If we can't have flat show, I'm sure that this has been addressed, but it, I'd be remiss...
Or what do other districts do?
It's a good question.
I'd be remiss if I didn't ask.
Oh, no. They allow their marching bands to use it at halftime show and periodically to prepare. They just try not to make it a matter of habit that they're consistently practicing on the same field.
Okay.
And then they just showed us, you know, wear spots and said, you know, effectively, this is the concern, and this is how it'll affect over time.
Okay.
It's a great question, though.
Thank you.
The places you've visited, has any school district nearby here have had a turf in for six, seven, eight, 10 years?
Yes.
And they're still holding up? And I know most of it's considered like eight to 10 years, and then if you look for replacement, but is that pretty consistent then?
Barnstable was in their eight-year mark.
Okay.
And they're expecting at least two to four more years off of their current field.
Excellent.
We went to Marshfield. Marshfield has two. They're celebrating their fourth anniversary on those. They feel like, you know, they show signs of a lot of extended life, based on what they should have expected now and where they are. And then we also went to Greater New Bedford Voke, who just had their second-generation field installed about six months ago, and they said that they had their 12 years.
I think about 12, yeah.
12 years.
Excellent, excellent.
But they had very limited use at Greater New Bedford. They didn't have as much traffic as some of the other schools.
Okay.
So they stretched it out a little bit more than the average.
Okay, thank you.
So it was three visits?
We went to three different sites, two of which had multiple fields.
Okay. Did anyone go to Mass Maritime? They just put in a field there, I saw.
They did. We were trying to look at other high schools, just sort of to have a scope in terms of, we have a high school field, we want to orient ourselves to those.
Yeah.
I did actually talk to a member of the football coaching staff at Mass Maritime, actually recently, and he confirmed much of what we learned in our site visits. And I have to say, Courtney and Eric were there on all the site visits, very comprehensive in terms of the questions they asked, and our hosts were very thoughtful in terms of the information they presented.
Were the turf fields also being used for physical education classes?
Yes.
Andrew?
I think that's, I think that that needs to be a common bond. It's not just athletics, it's also the common denominator of education. Physical education kids can use those.
Just a comment, particularly a week like this, spring sports are starting, P.E. classes can't go out...
Outstanding!
Right, snow covered, but the turf...
I see a rainstorm or our snows, and we get that cleaned off, and guess what? We can use that. Where in the grass field we can't.
Thank you.
Excellent.
This weathers.
And then also, can I add? I'm on the soccer team, and I don't think there's one student who would argue against that we could field, so it's in the opinion, I wish the soccer team was for...
Thank you.
You were talking about the site visits, and I was wondering if comparable site visits were also done to high schools that have well-maintained natural turf fields?
We actually reached out to a couple sites. One in particular, several of us reached out to, but we did not get the same response. One of them, we had no response welcoming us down for a visit. So we have reached out and tried, but we did not get an opportunity.
They didn't ask you for a visit, or they didn't have any information, like, no answer at all?
They either flat-out did not respond, or they didn't welcome us to come down for a site visit. And I'm sure part of it was the timing, this time of the year and conditions and what we'd see. But we did, we did reach out to try and have that balanced perspective.
All right, John?
I had, in the prior incarnation of the Field Committee, I had a chance to speak to both the Danvers and the Lynnfield group, and then as well in the separate discussions, because I actually have a relative that's the head of the DPW for Newburyport, and I talked to the Newburyport field person as well. And they all mirror what you're saying, too, as well, as far as timeframe, as far as usage, and things of that nature.
Any last, okay, questions? The finances is at last.
It is, and that's long, much longer. But I didn't know if you wanted to let Mr. Brown speak before we put CDM up.
Sure, absolutely. Come on down. If you can just move over to the mic, though, so that we can hear you. Well, we can hear you, but so the home, people at home can hear you. Thanks for joining us. Sorry about the reschedule.
No problem. Thank you for the invitation. I'm here, I'm here on behalf of the Recreation Committee in support of an all-purpose field at the Falmouth High School. I'm mindful that this is the first big step that the town has taken in the, pursuant to the Athletic Field Master Plan, also known as the GEL report, funded by the Community Preservation Fund, I think at a cost of approximately $24,000 to come up with this half-inch report, which details that the town of Falmouth needs three artificial turf fields or nine new grass fields. After attending some of your, I guess I would say seminars or the...
The forums.
The forums, the forums. I learned, and I also learned the same in this half-inch GEL report, that one artificial turf takes the place of three to four grass fields. And I don't think the town wants to build nine new grass fields. And our fields are being overused now. The Recreation Committee has spent a lot of time on reviewing this all-purpose field, as well as reviewing the need for more grass fields and the grass fields that we have now. Our two most important fields are Sandwich Road, that's used for lacrosse, and in the fall, for football. And then there's the Trotting Park Fields, that's used for lacrosse, for girls' lacrosse, boys' lacrosse, soccer, and camps and tournaments. And it's completely and utterly overused, and it never gets a chance to rest. With an artificial turf field, you get almost 750 uses, where a grass field is supposed to only have 180 uses. It's, something is going to have to change here. Either the town of Falmouth is going to have to learn to say no, we have to stop sports in some of these fields in certain periods of time, or we have to build new fields, or we can start at least, getting at least one artificial turf field. The town is about ready to spend approximately $150,000 to, on four of our major fields, starting at Sandwich Road, and there's three big fields out of Trotting Park. And then within three years, I suspect that we'd be back to square one, where the fields would have been overused. All the maintenance money that we spend to keep them in shape, even if we're not spending it now, but even if we did, the fields would never get a chance to rest. The growing season is in the spring, and the cross starts right before the growing season, during the growing season, and stops right at the beginning of the summer when it's resting anyway. Then football starts up, and then it doesn't rest. Or the soccer starts up, and it doesn't rest. So I think our only solution here in town, and the most fiscally responsible solution in town, is to have an artificial turf. And we're really grateful that the school, the Falmouth Schools, this board, and hopefully the town meeting and the voters will put together and come together and make this community project, an all-purpose field, happen. The Rec Committee, I'll be frank with you, is nervous. In the event that this artificial turf field is not, all-purpose field is not implemented by the town, and the football program remains at Fuller Field, we're going to be in a real crunch. The senior center's getting built, it's going to probably, it's going to take out the playground, it may take out the basketball court. And those are two big functions of the Recreation Department. The Recreation Department has a big camp program in the summer. It's a staging area in the front of the building where the senior center is, and where the senior center is supposed to go. They'll be putting the kids in the back, and if the field's still there for the football program, there'll be no room for a playground, possibly no room for, and no room for the basketball court. So this is a big community project in the Recreation Committee's eyes. If this all-purpose field is implemented and starts off at the high school, it's going to, it's going to be good for the entire town of Falmouth, it'll be good for the Recreation Department, it's going to be good for the senior center, it's going to be good for the high school kids, as well as all youth sports. I imagine that the high school doesn't have 750 uses, and hopefully, maybe we can rest Sandwich Road field in the spring at least every third year. Maybe lacrosse can play out at the high school when it's not used, or maybe football can be rested in the fall and maybe play on Sundays at the, at the high school field if the, if the high school isn't using it. I think, and that would give the Sandwich Road fields, the Trotting Park three fields, an opportunity to rest once in a while, and I think that would be good for the whole town, or else we'd have to learn to say no to a lot of adult sports, to a lot of heavy-use grass turf sports, a lot of camps, a lot of tournaments. And I think it's good for the town to have these adult sports, to have these tournaments, have these camps, because it brings people to town. I know just, just recently, there was tournaments this, this weekend here in Falmouth, and they used, they used the high school, and there were people from all over, it was a born basketball tournament, actually, but there's people from all over Massachusetts and Rhode Island here. And they're staying in our hotels, they're staying, they're eating in our restaurants, and it's good for business. And I think that if we get this grass field in place, there could be tournaments, it'll be good for everybody, the business community, the year-round residents, the children, and the adult athletes.
Can I, can I ask a quick question? Can you, can, did the Rec Committee vote to support this?
Nano-slate.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify and make sure that was on the record. Melissa?
Can you come to town meeting and say exactly that in front of town meeting?
Possibly.
Please.
Any, Andrew?
Could you explain to me a little bit more, you were, I think you were starting to allude to it, how, so I'm trying to get a sense of the difference between town uses from the Recreation Committee, or maybe some of these outside tournaments, and school uses, and if, you know, relocating this program and field to the high school, and how that coordination happens. I'm just trying to get a sense of who's got responsibility here and how it actually works.
I think that question is primarily above my pay grade, but, and knowledge base, but I would say, for example, Sandwich Road, I imagine lacrosse probably takes up, if there's 180 uses for a grass field a season, I imagine youth lacrosse and youth football would exhaust that 180 uses. So that would cut out camps, adult lacrosse games, adult soccer games are played there also, and I think that would take that right out. As for Trotting Park, I really don't know as much about those fields, but I do know that there's a lot of tournaments there. I think there's a lot of girls' soccer tournaments and boy soccer tournaments there, and I think those would probably need to end. There's a lot of recreation league play there, as well as high school play there, middle school play there. And it's, those fields are used way over 180 times a year. And then there's the problem with people using the field unauthorized. That's a whole different story.
So I think that that is a good question that we should probably try and, I would like to know the answer to, you know, how, how the different, how Rec coordinates with other groups like Falmouth Soccer Club or whoever, and how they're, how they figure out who is using the fields and what the rest schedule looks like, if there ever is one, and what it would look like if we had an artificial turf field. I think that would be really helpful to know.
Yeah, because I'm also hearing sounds of growth, and I feel like, on one hand, we're just trying to take care of, we can't handle the capacity that we have, and then, you know, bringing in some of these other outside things, and what do we say yes to, and what do we say no to? It's all, it's kind of confusing to me.
And that, and in terms of the school property, that would come to Kathleen.
So if the school department wants to use a town field, I would contact the Rec Department. I'd speak to Joe Olenek if we had a need for that. If any youth groups or Rec programs wants to use school fields, they contact us. There's a building use, facility use form that goes through Dan Murphy, and the high school principal signs off on it. So there is a coordinated effort. Certainly priorities given to the schools, programs on schools' fields, but even Fuller Field, which is obviously the flashpoint of a lot of this, that's a town-owned field with the Rec Department actually overseeing the use of it. So they block out the time that we need for football in the fall, they block out the time that we need for baseball in the spring, and then other groups use around that. So it is a coordinated effort, and during the site visits, they might have seen some of the master schedules. If we had a turf field at the high school, you would schedule your school events, but certainly Sundays, some teams practice, but Park Warner Football has first dibs on Sundays, I think, if that ever happens. And youth lacrosse is already up at the high school every Tuesday and Thursday night. So it does work, but it's going to take even more coordination, you're right. If there's a turf field and we're doing three or four times the uses.
Terry, and then John?
As far as the coordination goes, how are they going to schedule practices?
High school or youth groups?
The high, the high school practices, like, if teams are going to use the same field, are they going to have to stagger them during the nighttime?
Really, and maybe CDM can even speak to that a bit when we talk about the site selection at the high school. We don't lose any fields. Right now, the proposed site, whether it was turf or grass, would be on an un-irrigated, unused field. So I think if you visited Barnstable and Greater New Bedford Voke or Marshfield, teams and programs still have their, their field, and you're rotating practices and games onto your artificial turf field. But what you get is not overuse of that facility, because the turf field can handle it. It's lit, and you can do two, three, four practice cycles, you know, in, after school. So it does work. It's, sometimes have schedulers, facility people that just deal with the use of the field. Usually not one, but you visit towns that have two, three, four artificial turf fields, and they're always going.
John?
I coached Falmouth Soccer Club for a number of years, and I can attest to that during the forum, but it is like a Rubik's Cube for those folks and for us, to try to figure out who's got what field. And it does come into play, you know, just as you were talking, Kathleen, I was thinking about some rain times, when that changed the whole dynamics, and it skews everything. So, but, but definitely, definitely...
So, but definitely, definitely there is a need.
There is. And JV boys lacrosse overlaps on the JV softball field at the high school right now. So every time we have boys lacrosse practice and softball practice, we're aware of that, but I can't really schedule games on both fields. So it's already, it already happens to limited amount for us, actually. We're fortunate. But it does take coordination, and it's exactly the situation you're looking for. When you go to the high school on a Tuesday or Thursday night, and you see the number of youth lacrosse programs out there, then there's also very active softball programs now on both of the softball fields. Every evening out there, youth lacrosse.
Walter, you want to have?
Just to reinforce the practicality of the artificial turf, Patrick may want to speak to this, but I gave Nancy a copy of an article in the Cape Cod Times last month, that Barnstable is spending $10 million to convert their fields to artificial turf, and their fields are already on the campus. So this thing, a lot of money, just because that's the practical approach to being able to utilize those fields. Patrick, you?
It's, for clarification, they're adding a second artificial turf field, so there would be two artificial turf fields. And then they're upgrading in phases, some of the natural grass fields, like baseball fields and things like that.
I just want to caution the group to stay within the scope of our plan. Because I think sometimes when we, when we go outside of that, I think it adds a lot of confusion. And so what we're asking for is, right now, is one field to be out at Falmouth High School, whether it's grass or turf. You know, you'll get a recommendation out of our committee, but I think we need to stay within the scope of what it is that we're asking for.
Can you give us a little?
Yeah. Did you have anything else? Thank you so much for coming tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you once again for taking the first step in implementing some of the recommendations of the Athletic Field Master Plan.
See you at town meeting.
Nancy, do you want to move into finance, or are you going to?
Nope.
How do you want to do this? Go right to?
And this is for CDM, and Patrick coming up. And what I would like to just say is that CDM is here, and the reason that I'm giving them the most time is this is your opportunity to ask them questions. For the first two parts, I know you need to go back and really think about it, and you can come back and ask us. However, they will not be here on the next meeting. So this is, really, I want to spend the bulk of the time so that you can look at their presentation and ask them questions while they're sitting here in front of you.
Thank you for being able to make it tonight on the reschedule.
So I just want to set the scope here and what we've asked CDM to do. Very, very simply, the committee or the subcommittee of the entire committee, we did two things. One, we just clarified and updated the scope of the work that we wanted them to do. And that ended up being pretty straightforward in that it was a, the project was going to be very, very similar, if not exactly the same, as what was, what was presented four years ago, and it literally is four years ago, that the bids went out previously. And then, after more discussion, we also wanted to compare, make sure that we gave the town apples-to-apples, oranges-to-oranges kind of comparison. So you'll see that from the perspective of uses. And both CDM and the Gail report reference an industry standard of sort of a three-to-one usage pattern. So that will be presented. We did ask them to present apples-to-apples on the upfront capital cost, the one-time capital cost. And then we had a lot of discussions about maintenance costs over the course of, we'd sort of came to an agreement over the course of 16 years. They do have a question for you on how best to present the data going forward, the comparisons going forward, because, you know, there's different ways to present information. So that's the scope of their work. There are things that we purposely left out of the scope of the work, and I don't want to confuse things right now, but if they look to me on some questions, it's because we purposely agreed to leave one or two things out of the scope of their work. So with that, it's all yours. Does everybody have a copy of our presentation there at the front?
Are there any more? Sharon, is there another one? If I have any. So I don't have to make, thank you. I need one. I don't know if anybody, does anybody else need one besides me?
They were on the table. Does everyone have one? They were on the table.
Nick got one?
Okay. No, I just want to make sure Jamie and Nick got one.
Yep.
Yep, thanks. I just needed one.
Well, good evening. My name is David Young with the firm of CDM Smith, and with me tonight is our landscape architect, Scott Langford. As you can see from the next slide, the, we have about a 20-minute presentation. You can ask questions in between, but I think if you actually hold them to the end, we'll answer a lot of them. We're happy to stay and answer any questions you do have at the end. You can see from the format, we'd like to just give you a brief history of how we got to where we are tonight, from our perspective and our involvement. Review the current project. Review, Scott will then talk about grass growing. As you can all see from the first day of practice out there today, some of the difficulties. Get into a discussion of natural versus artificial, so that when we present the cost, you'll understand that we're comparing apples-to-apples when we do the cost presentation. And then get into some typical pros and cons accepted in the industry, as well as, there's a slide there specific to Falmouth. And then, as I said, we'll answer any of the questions that you may have. Brief history, CDM Smith actually started working with the town back in 2012 on this project. We were hired to actually look at potential field sites up at the high school. We were best to put a new football field, natural versus artificial. The focus at the time really was on the artificial more. But we did look at the full campus site. And as many of you know, it's getting pretty up and down, a lot of elevation change once you start to get off into the woods. But we did look at, looking inside the existing track, and looking at over where some of the softball or lacrosse and soccer fields are. Ultimately, in discussion with the committee at the time, it was recommended to use the site that we're looking at tonight, and you'll see that in a moment. So in 2013, the town hired us to actually do a final design. We worked very closely, had several meetings with the committee at the time. The committee was very active. They interviewed several artificial turf vendors. They wanted to make sure they felt comfortable with what turf to select. And they actually went through interviews with multiple turf vendors. They did select, and we had three that were going to be, or that were actually put into bid documents. The project was actually publicly bid, and bids were received in 2014. Three bidders proposed, and those bids came in actually very tight, within two to 2.2 million. Now that was just for the project. On the field, that wasn't the full project cost. So I want to emphasize that, because the full project cost is closer to 3 million plus. And then in 2016, because that project was not implemented at the time, the town hired us to do a estimate of a natural turf field up there, not on the site that was proposed, but an additional natural turf field. And you'll see the location of that and the cost for that as we get into the presentation.
I just wanted, the context, the context for that, the context for that last proposal was when the town was asking the school district whether or not we could, they could cite this senior center at the Brick Hill Road soccer field.
Soccer field, yes.
Location, so that there was a replacement estimate that was made.
Right.
Thanks, Michael.
And so then, the town hired us this past fall, after the town meeting vote, to look at the cost comparison between natural and artificial turf. So on the next slide, just to refresh everyone's memory, the site that was selected, as I indicated back in 2012, is the best site up at the high school for locating the multipurpose field complex, shown in the yellow square. It was actually the staging site for when the high school was expanded. The basketball court used to be located there, they were moved closer to the high school, and there was another track facility there. But it was never actually built after the staging site and turned into an actual field. So it wasn't field quality, and may have been used for some practices and stuff, but not really field games. The next slide just gives you a different orientation to show you the actual location, and that is more specific to the scale of what a field would look like. Now, on the next slide, I want to point out sort of the common themes that would go, or common components that would be part of the project. And then Scott will get into comparing natural versus artificial turf. So in, whether it's artificial or a natural turf field, the field surface would be 235 feet by 390 feet. And that accommodates a field of 195 by 360. It accommodates the safe zones and room for the teams to be inside the fenced area. It includes about 810-person bleacher. Would be an aluminum bleacher on the high school side of the field, or the north side. That bleacher would also include a press box that would have an elevator lift, and it's required by state building code to have that for handicap accessibility to that press box. The site would be fenced for safety and access control reasons. There would be a pre-engineered building, concession restroom building, located on the north side as well, where the high school side of that field. And the field would be lit with 50-foot candle lighting capability, which is a higher level, so that you can play small-ball sports at night. And it would allow for cable productions on the field as well. So that's how the light levels were determined versus 30-foot candles is a lower level. So with that, I'd like to have Scott now go through more of the natural versus artificial turf comparison, and then the cost associated with that.
Good evening. Scott Langford, I'm a project manager with CDM Smith, and a landscape architect and a soil scientist. And I just go through a few slides talking about growing grass in New England and Falmouth. We've heard some of this tonight from some of the other presenters. Basically, the high school sports start in the spring before grass starts actively growing. And, you know, climatic conditions are unpredictable for grass. Maintenance of grass is challenging due to all these factors listed here, irrigation, pH control, fertilizer, et cetera. This is a standard growth curve for cool-season grasses, which we have here in New England. That's your Kentucky bluegrass, is your fescues. Typical athletic field mixes are considered cool-season grasses in New England. This graph is produced by UMass Amherst, and we've overlaid a few things on this related to what we're talking about here tonight, which is athletics. Showing spring sports, you know, in that March to May time window, and then the fall sports in the August to November time window, sort of overlaid on top of these growth curves of the both roots and shoots of the grass. So you can see that spring sports, which started today, we've heard that, basically starting, in today's condition, under snow, basically, before the roots and the shoots certainly have really started to grow for the grass. This is the MIAA Spring 2018 Field Sports Calendar. We've heard that the sports started today. I went by the site this afternoon and saw the girls lacrosse actually practicing on the basketball court adjacent to this facility. These are some images of the field as they stand today. The one on the left is this site location, the one on the right is the Gov Fuller site. That particular slide is not in your packet, because I added it an hour ago. These are some images just of the field complex from Google Earth from the past, an April 14th image and May 23rd image. You can see, you know, difference from the left to the right in some of these fields where the grass is starting to get greener as you get further into the season. You can see some of the wear patterns down the middle. You can see some repairs that were done to one of the fields. And then the bottom is a Falmouth image. You can see some typical natural turf wear that happens from some of the overuse that was described earlier. As Patrick said, we were hired this past fall to look at basically a natural turf field in that same location, to look at basically what the associated costs would be for that field versus an artificial turf field. And so that's summarized here in very broad terms. This is the field-only cost. This is not the other items that are part of the broader projects that Dave alluded to. This is not the bleachers, this is not the press boxes, the other costs. This is really just a field-to-field comparison. So this just outlines the general pieces associated with it, from site preparation to well and irrigation, grading, et cetera, for a total of $450,000. And then, the artificial turf field design, looking very similar, same footprint, et cetera. This is some of what Dave had discussed earlier, that the committee had previously looked at different artificial turf manufacturers and vendors. And I actually selected a two-and-a-half-inch slit film product, which is what's shown on the graph, graphic on the left-hand side. That's a typical artificial turf product, typical height. At the time, they were going to use an SBR rubber. That's the recycled tire rubber that you've heard so much about on the news over the years. And one of the items that we were asked to look at, this graph is hard to see on the screen, maybe easier to see in your packet. This is a comparison done by a park and recreation department, actually out of Portland, Oregon, but it was a good summary. And the highlights here are they looked at health, environment, recreational value, and cost of different types of infills, which are shown on the left. The green arrow box on the left is EPDM, which is what was sort of selected through this latest research that we did. The box on the far right is a natural turf. And the real takeaways from this are, the legend on the bottom showing the red to the green boxes basically are areas, red is an area of concern, and green is an area of benefit. And then all the items in between are sort of shades in between there. It's interesting to compare the EPDM to a natural grass, just in terms of those different matrices. Because, you know, you would think that the health benefit would be all green for the grass, but it's not necessarily green, and that's due to fertilizers and pesticides. And so it's just an interesting comparison, looking at the two. So as part of this recent study, we were asked to present basically the typical infill materials that are used today. And that's SBR rubber on the top. That's what most artificial turf fields are that you see in New England. Including some of the fields that were visited, that Barnstable field is an SBR rubber field. The newer Greater New Bedford High School is an EPDM field. So we looked at these different types of infill materials, talked about the benefits of each. And with the, with the committee sort of, they chose EPDM as being the best alternative to the SBR rubber. And so this cost, looking at similar items as before, again, this is the field only for the artificial turf field, and this is with EPDM. It's a virgin EPDM material. So it's a higher cost than the SBR rubber, but that's, this cost is, this cost comparison... So it's a higher cost than the SBR rubber, but that's, this cost is, this cost comparison is representative of the EPDM alternative. So this totals just over $1 million. And again, this is compared to the $450,000 that we looked at before. And then we were asked to look at the maintenance costs of both the natural and artificial turf field, and this was under the basis of all the maintenance would be basically contracted out, regardless of whether the town would or could ultimately do it, and you certainly, you know, have the abilities within a town or municipality to maintain both fields. But this was, in order to make it a comparison, we were told to look at basically contracting these services out to a professional in both cases. So this is just listing the typical maintenance program for natural turf field for a high-quality natural turf athletic field with a cost range of $25,000 to $30,000. And then looking at those same costs for an artificial turf field, again, having this contracted out with the program listed at the top of what would typically be done by a field maintenance contractor, and this also includes painting some of the sports, assuming it wasn't all inlaid as part of the installation. And that range is $7,000 to $9,000. And then we started looking at, trying to get to a true lifecycle cost of the project. We looked at number of plays, and this is that three-to-one number that was discussed earlier, that basically a natural turf field versus a synthetic turf field, you get a sort of a three-to-one ratio. And again, as Patrick said, we chose the 16-year comparison mainly based on the fact that the typical warranty period for a synthetic turf field is eight years. And you heard earlier that some of the municipality has gotten a longer period than that, but we based it on the, sort of, the minimum time period that's given under warranty for synthetic turf field, and then we doubled it to that 16-year time. So this looks at basically the number of plays you would get out of a natural turf field, assuming a percentage for rain days, and then in the 16-year cycle, assuming that you're going to lose the field at least once for basically re-establishment, recreation, coming to a total number of plays in a 16-year cycle of 2,700. And then looking at the same thing for artificial turf field, and coming to about 8,600 plays. So again, that's that sort of three-to-one ratio in rough numbers. And that is all trying to get, again, to a lifecycle cost in that 16-year lifecycle, looking at the annual maintenance, the field renovation for the natural turf at year six and 12, for a total lifecycle cost of a range of $6,000 to $680,000. And then comparing that on the right side of the graph for an artificial turf field, again, looking at maintenance and looking at the replacement cost at year eight, and that's in the range of $712,000 to $744,000. And so in summary, looking at the construction costs, the annual maintenance costs, the lifecycle costs, and the number of plays, and sort of trying to get down to a cost per play, you know, for a typical game or typical use, the natural turf field is in the range of $220,000 to $250,000, the artificial turf field in the $80,000 to $90,000, in a cost-per-play comparison. Dollars, sorry, $80,000 to $90,000, sorry, in a cost-per-play.
Do you want to hold all the questions to the end, or can I ask?
You can ask a question.
So how long does it take to replace a turf? If we're going, this assumes that in that 16-year period, we would replace the turf field once, right?
At year eight.
At year eight.
Yeah.
How long does, do you lose any playing time when you do that?
You would typically, you would typically design and put that up to bid in the spring so that the construction started at the end of the school year. So you don't lose any sports time, and you don't lose any time for gym classes or anything else. So you would start it whenever school ends, you know, say, July 1st. It would typically take, for just a straight replacement, about four weeks.
Okay.
But we would, the ones that we've done, we would have them start, say, July 1st, and have a date of the middle of August, so that when springs, when fall sports start up again, that the field would be available.
So that nine months of use, 30 days, two plays per day, that's looking at the school year use, basically, because you're going to lose a month of that at some point. You're going to lose a month in the summer to replace.
One year you would go to turn that replacement, but not?
Right. I just want to make sure that it was, I didn't know how long it took, so I wasn't sure if that 8,640 was.
Good question.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much.
So this slide is really just showing the natural turf fields that are part of the school program now. This is directly from that Gail report. The left slide showing all the fields at the high school, the right slide showing the Gov. Fuller field. And then Patrick and David had alluded to an alternative field that we looked at at 2016. This is that field basically behind the high school. And so the project site is, sure. The project site that we're looking at now is really over in this area down below. So this is literally behind the high school, and this looked at a, you know, an access road parking lot and putting a field in that location. And it's maybe hard to see here, but there's a lot of topography there, so it's a real challenging site to do so. And then this is basically a summary of those costs, and this is sort of gets to the question that Patrick alluded to before. We were doing a one-to-one comparison before of a natural turf field to an artificial turf field. This is basically looking at that site, natural turf field on the left, the field behind the high school in the middle column, and then comparing that to an artificial turf field. So this is really looking at a two-to-one comparison, not a three-to-one comparison. And I guess the, Gov. Fuller would still be in use in this scenario.
All right. So this was, this was a little, a little change from the previous project scope, obviously. And what it really speaks to is that the committee wanted to be very clear about not just doing a one-to-one or an apples-to-apples comparison on natural grass to artificial turf on a cost comparison, but on a use comparison. And they, and that's why this came into play, is that there was the thought that it would, we would be able to cite a second natural grass field at the high school in the location that we had previously identified from that senior center project, and that the Gov. Full, Fuller field would continue to be used also. So that would be the three-to-one ratio of three grass fields to one artificial turf field.
So this, this doesn't really take into account the Gov. Fuller field in terms of, A, because it's built, and B, we don't take into account the maintenance of it, per se. So this is really looking at two fields, the project site field and that field behind the high school on the left in the middle column, and then the proposed artificial turf field in the right column. And the cost total on the bottom basically being 3.4 for those two natural turf fields, and on the right, the 3.1 for the one artificial turf field.
And, yeah, so for the natural fields, that would be still having Fuller field, and with the artificial, we'll be replacing. Okay, so there's, is there any way to not have Fuller field and have natural fields? No? Okay, so we would have to keep it there?
Not at this time.
Okay, so the only way to move that field is to have an artificial?
Yeah. If we're going to continue with the, with the apples-to-apples comparison of the three-to-one ratio, which is not just CDM's, you know, best practice, it's, we heard it from Gail Associates first in this community, and then we, and the more we learn, it's a, it's a, it's just a sort of an industry standard on this. So unless somebody decided that they wanted to build yet another third natural grass field, we thought it would be most efficient to leave Gov. Fuller field alone and continue to use it as it is. So from an, from a project cost, a one-time capital cost, the comparison is $3.1 million to $3.4 million in terms of a capital cost, one-time capital cost of artificial turf field versus natural turf fields.
But it doesn't get our kids back to the high school. Doesn't get our football program to the high school, which is what we voted for.
It would, yes, it would. You would have a stadium at the high school that would be, a natural grass stadium at the high school that could be used for games, but probably would have to be rested.
I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Because on page 11, you basically have a overview of a natural grass or a natural turf field with the lines of obviously more than just football. So my initial concern with that is if we go to, and I love, and I love this comment, is that, excuse me, I'll get mine together. You mentioned, yes, here it is, on page 18, you mentioned the fact that a grass field or a natural turf field, and the term you used was "high quality." And I put a question mark behind that because how long would a multipurpose grass field be high quality? And we're talking about maintenance of $25,000 to $30,000 on services contracted out, but if I look at that and say, well, how long does high quality last on a grass multipurpose field? And I would say, very limited time at best. So I would think that those costs could increase tremendously. Not tremendously, but would increase. That's just a statement, but I, when I, when you say "high quality," I don't know how you can maintain grass and multi-sports as high quality.
John, did you have a question?
I'm just crunching some numbers so I can.
Andrea?
So just to follow up on what Bill was saying, so are there no schools that are doing high-quality grass fields then?
Yeah, there were, but Sonja said they didn't.
I think there are. I think those are campuses that have a lot of space and have the ability to, it's about resting the field. It's really, you cannot play it, you know, from 2:00 in the afternoon until 8:00 at night, sport after sport after sport, because it just, it gets beaten.
Kathleen, is it NOSIT?
It's DY.
DY.
DY has their own grounds crew. Their fields are in excellent shape. They desperately want an artificial turf field because it's very limited, the use of it, but they have a different model. I'm thinking way back to four years ago. They have their own grounds crew, four full-time maintenance people to maintain their fields. Our schools, at least now through DPDW, but DY is the only one that, and we have a field hockey coach here and a football coach here. Their fields are very good, but they have to rotate them, and they certainly won't be able to handle.
And they have a lot of them.
Yeah, it's flat, laid out, flat. But that's the only one. Mashpee has grass fields, poor, gone, poor.
Just as.
John, they're way nicer than ours.
I got my numbers straight now.
Okay, go ahead.
No, so the, I think even a more powerful comparison that really jumps out at you is the lifecycle costs. If you looked at the 16-year lifecycle cost and look at $680,000 for the natural turf, and then just multiply that times three, and then the artificial turf, you don't have to multiply it by anything, that means it's like $1.3 million more for natural turf, for a true apples-to-apples over the 16-year operating cost.
Right. So we did, that was a question we were going to ask of the, of the committee on how do we present this data, this information on an apples-to-apples sort of basis going forward is, you know, we kind of stopped on the operating, on the maintenance cost side of this because we were saying, okay, should we include a second one from the maintenance costs? How do we handle Gov. Full, Fuller field, which has some level of maintenance already? So that was a sort of a question going forward, if we needed to present this in some format at the town meeting, how would we present it? So you, you got the, you got the gold star on your head for.
Thank you.
Did you have something to add? I'm sorry, we got cut off.
Mr. Almiron.
Yeah, that's, we're going to talk about the grass.
Just because the DY field was brought up, they have, I'm sorry to say, they have very, very nice grass there for football. I can't speak to the other sports that play there, but they only play football games there. They practice on it very little, and that's, they're in a good situation. They switched a sub-varsity game to our site this year because their grass wasn't as high quality as they would like it to be. So they're having difficulties too, and they're, and they're, they've kind of kept theirs the best, you know, but they switched the game.
DY was going to the Super Bowl. We weren't this year. We always have next year. But, so they called and asked, "Do you mind hosting the freshman JV games at Fuller Field?" And by end of October, I don't think we could have made it any worse than it was down there. But it's a good, you know, anecdotal example of, you know, even in the best of situations.
I was just going to add, so that's related to that, is some schools have actually put in the artificial turf field, and they put all their practices on the artificial turf. And the purists, they keep the natural turf field in the stadium for the game days, because they can play at night, because they like the artificial turf fields and all that, and that's where the practice time is. That's the field they want to beat up, not the natural turf field, but just as an option.
No, I just think that the. To piggyback on my gold star, the, no, fair, no, but I think that's a powerful thing to reinforce, because that's, you know, that's 1.3 million over, more over 16 years, and then 2.6 million over, you know, the 32-year, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, I think that is something just to reinforce.
It's a really good point on how to present the information.
I know you have more slides, I'm sorry. We got distracted.
Thank you.
So we just looked at some typical pros and cons. This slide and the next slide is Falmouth-specific. I don't need to go through all these, but just, you know, natural grass is natural grass, so it absorbs carbon dioxide, produces oxygen. It's cooler than artificial turf asphalt or concrete. The cons are the things we talked about, the challenges of growing grass versus the spring sports schedule, not resilient to frequent high-impact athletic play, can have frequent closures due to weather, requires watering, fertilizer, et cetera. The artificial turf, obviously playable in all seasons, much greater increased playing time, that gets to the three-to-one ratio, less expensive to maintain. That's based on the numbers we just presented. No pesticides, does not require watering. Cons, obviously, the field is hotter, and that's primarily a concern in August, and it's just something that, you know, the coaches need to be aware of in those, in that early season time, just in terms of, you know, not playing maybe from 11:00 to 2:00 or something, just to not be on the field in the hottest time of the day. And that it requires replacement every eight to 12 years. And then there's a negative public image, and that's primarily with the SBR rubber Specific Falmouth things, the 2016 Athletic Field Master Plan, which has been discussed numerous times tonight, sponsored by the town, you know, offered a recommendation that the town should invest in three artificial turf fields or nine natural grass fields in addition to improving the maintenance of the existing fields. One of the negatives of a natural turf field, they attract geese, and permanent solutions are difficult. This is related to the field behind the school. The terrain of the field is, it's not easily suitable for a field. It's a challenging site, but it was, it was investigated during that senior center discussion. If natural grass fields, we've already discussed this, are the priority, Fuller Field would have to be, continued to be used. And that's, that's really it. This, the white line on this is basically the entire school property. A comment came up at the last meeting about sort of the assessor's lines related to the school site.
Could you just point out where that other field is that?
The one in the woods? Where the one in the woods would be?
Right here. It's a road.
So you would, is it accessible? They'd have to put a road in?
It's behind the cafeterias towards the Project Adventure course, Cross Country Trail runs right along.
So one of the questions that I... So one of the questions that I have is, you know, the GAIL report says the town needs three artificial turf fields, but this one will be primarily used for the school. So does that count as one of the three, or would it be three that have purely town access?
No.
No?
It was a combined.
Combining all the town facilities and the school facilities, overlooking at all of them, we need, upon their recommendation, we need three. So this would help meet in some way that.
Combined.
Okay. Thank you. That was not clear to me at all. I'm glad I asked. Do we have any other questions?
I think you already spoke about this, but I'm just going to check. So when you say if the school committee chooses to implement the natural fields, is, are the games going to be held at Falmouth High School or Fuller Field?
So the stadium would then be located at Falmouth High School? So that, it was just, how often could you use that natural grass field?
Practice would be held at Fuller Field?
Yeah, we didn't get into the scheduling side of it too much.
It's a good question, though.
Just two quick items that I just want to make sure that they, they were questions that were raised in the community forums, they were never on the CDM scope, you know, four years ago or this year, but we have been looking into them. One is the issue of facilities, locker room facilities at, that are currently at Fuller Field, those glorious locker rooms down there. And then how would they transition, similar facilities transition to the high school? We do have a working plan that we had a walk-through with an architect. It was, the architect did not raise any serious concerns, he's going to cost out some different types of lockers that we could be placing at different locations. There would be a, an entrance for both the home team, obviously, and the visiting team. It looks like we could, without, without a whole lot of sort of reworking of the space, manage that. And, and the cost of that would be, at this point, looks like it would come on out of just our regular operating budget and done as a summer project type of thing. This, the, second thing was kind of, when I looked through all the reports from four years ago, was kind of this, this thrown-in idea of, can we create another practice field? Or it wasn't even a full practice field, it was kind of a partial practice field out at the campus. And there was no detail about that, it was just sort of, it was going to be over in this section, sort of over by the girls' softball field. And the, kind of the conclusion we came to is that we've, with the, with the sort of master plan concept of, of the campus being up in the air a little bit, we would need to go through a full season at the high school to see what the, what the real needs are. The previously identified practice field was very limited in scope, so we didn't have a clear understanding of what kind of metrics they were using, and who was, who might be there, those types of things. So, you know, that, any additional practice fields or additional fields at the, at that high school campus, sort of on the existing developed campus, we would sort of need to take a look at a year from now or a year and a half from now, once natural grass fields or an artificial turf field is built. But as an example of how the school district has been able to upgrade some fields, we have improved the, the girls' softball field over there through operating budget money, and we've, just this past August, we re-turfed the existing varsity soccer field right up by Brookham Road. So we do have the ability to do those kind of projects on that field to try to keep up with the needs up there. And, and of course, every time I drive by Brookham Road and that soccer field, there's flocks of geese. So, very frustrating.
We have to ask Mr. Law to look at that.
I definitely have a follow-up question.
Leah?
Okay. So Patrick, were you, with the practice fields idea, so that it would take a year to know whether or not we could have another practice field?
Or what, what's the purpose of it? That's really the question. There was no real, strong information, very clear information that you needed a, and the idea was sort of, that was out there four or five years ago, was that is sort of a half-practice field. It was, it wasn't, it was like 50 yards by 30 yards or something like that. So there was no true purpose for that practice field. So what we're, we're curious about is if, for example, we do have an artificial turf field there, you know, does, and we can schedule really, really well, what do we use that, what, what, you know, what fields might become available because we're able to use it? So that's kind of how we're handling those two outside-the-scope questions that had come up four years ago, and we have answers to them. One, we don't know yet, and the other, the locker room facilities, we have an architect working on just to sort of dot the i's and cross the t's.
Okay, so my, my question actually was, does that mean that that field could actually replace Fuller Field?
The.
The additional fields, if there can be an additional.
So, no, the, the additional practice field that was, was an idea that had no, there was no detail attached to it in any of the reports that I saw, could not, could not replace a third, be used as a third real playing field. It was, it was sort of a very, yeah, at this point. We have no, yeah, exactly.
And I just have a follow-up comment to that, because we did, we recommended, like a year ago, that we move the football program here, well, on campus, to Falmouth High School. And so Phil actually asked a really good question about practice, because when we talked about moving the football.
Program.
Program.
We moved all of it.
We talked about moving the whole program.
We did.
So basically, what I'm hearing is that if we had natural fields, we wouldn't be able to move the whole football program.
Right.
But I, I'll go back on that and say, when we voted to do that, I think, could be wrong, that we were looking at a artificial turf field at the high school with the football program, and then it became multi-sports. That did not change until we went to town meeting.
Correct.
And town meeting suggested that we look at A and B, both grass and artificial turf.
Right. And it was actually even, but we decided as a group, we voted to move the football program, and then John and I and, who else was on it? Walter, we all were on the initial turf, initial field committee, where we kicked around all the possible solutions, and that's how we ended up on turf, and that's what we took to town meeting. It was only, you're right, you're exactly right.
My understanding was that it was the whole program, including everything.
Me too. I agree. That's what we.
We were very explicit about that.
If you go back, and I think it was, I think Susan Augusta helped frame.
Yes.
What it is that we asked for. It was to relocate the Falmouth High School football program and fields to the Falmouth High School campus, and I remember her specifically wordsmithing.
Right. Yes, that it was the program. Yeah. Walter?
This is somewhat of a sidelight, but as most of you know, I'm still involved with the Cape Cod League, and they say the condition of that outfield is horrible, based on their standards, because of the way football tears it up. So continuing to have football there for them is not a good option. They were thrilled to find out that we were moving them off of there.
Did you have any more slides?
Did you, oh, okay, I thought it was another slide, Terry.
It's not a question, it's a comment. I just wanted to say thank you for all the energy you put into looking at the natural equipment, so that now we have good answers, even more why we support the turf one. So thank you for all that time.
Yeah, it was a lot of time. It was a lot of.
A lot of crunching of, and I had to really hang on every word you said, all that you said. Thank you.
Andrew?
Yeah, I'm going to sort of piggyback on that a little bit, Terry, because to be able to then bring this to town meeting, you know, we have a lot of people in town who really care very deeply about environmental factors, and so those kind of questions might come up, and we want to make sure that we have the best answers. So I missed a little bit about, when we're on page 14, 15, when we're looking at the infill, and all the numbers are based on the new synthetic crumb rubber, but I missed the transition about how that one was determined out of all the options to be the one to put forward into those numbers.
Maybe SBR product.
That was recommended previously.
Right.
I think the numbers have then been, they went beyond that to the new ones, the EPDM.
Right.
We reviewed earlier this year with one of the fields committees, the different options. You know, again, SBR has been the industry standard for years, but that's not the case, because people have come up with a perceived issues related to it. So we reviewed the cost for the different types. We showed them this chart, we showed them some other charts. We gave a brief overview of what some of the schools that we've been dealing with have been doing. And ultimately, they came down to using the EPDM because it's a virgin rubber, instead of using something that's encapsulated or getting into the organics, which require replacement because they break down, it's like dirt, it's an organic material. And there isn't as much, you know, experience with those types of infills either. So the direction was, for the cost purposes at this point, to put in that virgin rubber material as the infill. Now, when we say that, it's a sand-and-rubber mix, 50/50 typically. And Scott can run through the different costs, because he's been through this in two or three instances with Nicholas College recently, and going through it with City of Cambridge right now. So that's how we got there.
So we, the slide is up now, when we met with the subcommittee, we looked at all these different infills, we looked at the costs of all of them, and did our own sort of comparison of the pluses and minuses of each of them. The SBR obviously being a negative public perception of it, you know, which started with the NBC story years back. And then, you know, there's an encapsulated SBR, which is basically the same material, but it's, it's literally encapsulated. And then EPDM, which we selected, we looked at TPE, which is another. TPE is an alternative that's used a lot in New York State, but it's very, very expensive. So that was sort of thrown out from a cost perspective. And again, there are these organic infill products, which are listed on the bottom, which some schools are using, but we've seen them used more in the private school area where they have a dedicated maintenance staff that can really give them the maintenance that's necessary. They do require, as David just said, they require more frequent replacement of the infill because it does break down. It also has some restrictions, for instance, spring sports has started, it absorbs water so it freezes. So were an artificial turf field today would have been playable, a field with a natural infill is probably not playable because it's probably still frozen. So we looked at all those different pros and cons of all these things that are listed here, and based on the negative perceptions of the SBR, sort of arrived at the EPDM, it's the most similar in terms of how it, it performs and plays, it's the most similar because it's a similar rubber product, it's just a virgin product created specifically for artificial turf infill. So it doesn't have the negative perceptions and the other concerns that the recycled tires do. Yeah, Grady and Bedford, one of the sites that was visited has that product as, that's their infill on their replaced field is EPDM, virgin EPDM.
And since we're talking about replacements, so, and you guys have been involved in some of those recently, so then what happens with disposal of the entire product?
You basically do dispose of the infill and the turf itself. In today's industry, it's changed a lot over the years, up till today. We just put a project out to bid in Cambridge, and it's a replacement project, but in today, you can basically specify that the infill and the turf is 100% recycled, so it doesn't end up in a landfill. There's a lot of uses for this material, you know, post-use in a, in a project like this. So you can basically specify that it's all 100% recycled, so it gets used in some other way.
But you need to specify that when it happens.
You need to specify it. I mean, I, I think most of the turf companies that are doing it are going that way because there's a value in reuse of both the carpet and the infill, but we've chosen to specify it to make sure it's part of a, of a project so that it doesn't end up in a landfill, basically.
That's great, that's important. And I had one more question about, I think somewhere, it might have been on the health benefits and risks piece, someone was talking about surface treatments. So what, I think there's, you know, sometimes there needs to be water sprayed, but are there other things that need to be added to the artificial turf throughout the course, you know, of the maintenance of the year?
We, we've heard that in different communities, concern for like staph infections and so forth in turf. And there are products that companies will sell to, you know, put a cleansing coat, you know, it's basically a soap-based product or something to wash through the turf, but we have generally found and recommended in New England, where you get 44 inches of rain a year, that everything that gets on the surface basically just washes through, just like it does on a natural turf field. It basically washes through the turf. So in a specific instance where, you know, if you had a, an accident or something, then you would, you'd certainly want to wash, you know, blood or something like that through, but in just regular use, really find that just, just natural rainwater is the best sort of product.
Yeah, so that's not part of like any regular maintenance?
Not typically, no.
Great, that's been very helpful, thank you. Any last questions from the committee, and then we can take any from the, go first.
Okay. So as I understand, what we're doing here right now is we're looking over the presentation and seeing what we want to recommend they change, or?
No, no.
So which, we're going to decide on whether we want natural or turf field?
It's a really good question, because we actually haven't talked about what our next steps are, so.
Right. And what happens is, this is the first time that the school committee has heard this presentation, so at the end of the presentation, I will make a recommendation asking that the school committee consider moving in a direction that is coming up from the committee who's done all the work.
And then we won't vote on it until our next.
It will not be voted on.
And we won't vote on it today.
And then we move to town meeting and bring this up at town meeting.
What happens is, well, it's going to depend on what the school committee votes. So the subcommittee may, will make a recommendation to the school committee. If the school committee votes on our recommendation, then that will go to town meeting, on behalf of the school committee's recommendation.
Giving a step.
I'm sorry, the FinCom.
He's next.
And so that, that's kind of the process, but we're not, we're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Because the school committee can change the recommendation that comes from, from the Fields Task Force, so we don't know yet. Mr. Law?
Yeah, I'm Nick Law, I'm on the maintenance committee, I've been assigned to the field project here, and we do need to vote on this before town meeting. My first question is, when is your, when are you going planning on voting?
A week from tomorrow. Take it 27.
Yes.
Thank you. And second question is, the numbers that you have on page 25.
Project cost.
The project cost?
Yeah.
So presumably, it doesn't matter whether you go either one of these or you modify a little bit, but are these numbers go-to-town-meeting type of numbers? Because I'm not seeing contingency, I don't know if you've included bid, doc, preparation, legal, you know, all this stuff that gets titled in there at the end.
So the project cost?
The answer is yes, these are project costs. The last item there says engineering, construction, administration, contingency. They've been rolled into this. It doesn't say contingency.
It does.
It does. Not for the turf field, for the other ones it does.
All right, thanks.
So, yeah, but, yeah, it should, we need it to be for sure in there.
Just for, just, the primary, so the, the difference between four years ago, the total project cost, and what is being estimated here, is on the range of less than 5% difference in price, the total project cost. So the initial cost that was suggested in the bid documents was 2 to 2.2, it was really probably a 2.7, 2.8 million dollar project. This of 3.1 is really, is sort of, is really, you know, apples-to-apples. The biggest difference was really in terms of cost increase was in the lighting, is that correct?
The lighting, cost of aluminum, and just. The lighting, cost of aluminum, and just four years of...
So it's the other sides of the project, growing costs.
But I, yeah. I understand your point, but I think we need to get to the point where we vote on it and then we need to make sure that the preparation for town meeting is really clear and easy to understand.
One more question. So this is the presentation that we're gonna show at town meeting. This is a fiscal part or is this an entire presentation?
It actually will probably be quite different than this, I would guess.
Added?
Once we decide what we're gonna do.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
We're not there yet.
I was thinking student opinion is a very large part of this issue because students are like mostly affected by these, this change. So I think it'd be powerful at the school committee to have students talk and voice their opinions on that.
At town meeting.
At town meeting.
That's what I meant.
Yep. Absolutely. That would be great. Did anyone else that's joining us tonight, did anyone have any questions or comments?
Any comments from committee members? We have Courtney Lima here, who is the girls' coach, girls' across coach.
Just from the competitive standpoint, to the competitive advantage, field hockey, and I'm speaking sports-specific, is a totally different game when you play it on grass versus when you play it on turf. And as a coach of a very competitive team, it is very challenging to play at Barn School on one day and then try to get the girls familiar with grass again. And it's presented a lot of challenges. And we have some phenomenal field hockey players come through Falmouth High School. And I would love to see them be at the same level, playing on the same surface as everybody of their competitors.
Especially if it's Barn School.
Thank you, Courtney.
Sorry, Patrick.
You are getting to tie into my bias. And I think, when I look at all this, and this is the third time I've heard your presentation and I appreciate your efforts, and I think you've done a great, great job. But I think there should be page 29. And on page 29, I honestly believe strongly, as a former educator, coach, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that what is best for kids, programs, athlete, athletes, physical education, you name it, to me it's obviously a turf. It's not grass, it's turf. So that's a bias I have. And yeah, it came out now, but I just think it's in best interest of kids. And I think somewhere along the line, education becomes kids, athletes. Thank you.
And I will just, I just want to comment on that because I was very clear with CDM that they were to do a balanced presentation.
And I understand that perfectly.
But I think when it comes to the school committee and the input from the school committee on the town meeting presentations, I agree with you.
And we have had a lot of time to think, I mean, this isn't the first time I've seen this presentation. For a lot of us, it's not the first time and it's on the website, so everybody can look at it.
So I have a couple of questions. And maybe play devil's advocate and I don't, I want you... I'm not trying to sway one way or another. Most recently, there was a Mashpee player that was invited to go to Shriners this week. You don't get to go to Shriners games because you're a slouch. And Mashpee is grass, am I correct? And that, aren't they natural turf at Mashpee?
You talking about Shriners football game?
Yeah.
Yeah, Derek might be able to speak to how that's selected.
So, but...
How they select individuals.
Well, go ahead and finish your thoughts so that...
So that'd be, so then there's that most recent.
We have one playing too.
Sorry?
We have one playing too.
Excellent, that's outstanding. And we also went to the Super Bowl last year, as did Mashpee, and they both won their playing on grass. So I'm not trying to sway one way or another. I think, you know, I encouraged Mr. Brown from the Rec Committee to go to town meeting and speak to the turf field. But I just kind of wanted to play a little devil's advocate on the natural grass versus turf.
That's fine.
Sorry.
John.
Just a comment of that, as the anecdotal things of performance, I mean, that's a credit to the kids' talents and the coaching and the, you know, as well. But as far as, I wanted to comment on the, on the student involvement. Actually, pretty cool about this survey, I looked at it, that it was 50 kids, 50 students from ages 10 to 13 did participate and gave feedback. And 45 students from ages 14 to 18 did give feedback. So I think they're speaking, letting themselves be heard already, which is very cool.
I know, I love that.
Absolutely.
All right, let's wrap it up. Nancy, do you have a recommendation for us that's coming from the committee or from you or from both?
This is the recommendation coming from the Fields Task Force and Planning Committee. And if I misspeak, please let me know. But on behalf of the Fields Task Force and Planning Committee, I ask the Falmouth School Committee to consider supporting the recommendation for the construction of a multipurpose athletic stadium that includes a synthetic turf field with a surface area of 235 feet by 390 feet long with safe zones, 800-plus-person-capacity stadium seating bleachers, a press box with an American Disabilities Act compliant lift, and field lights for 50-foot candlelight level that supports both lighting cable as well as video cable. The site of the multipurpose athletic stadium will be located at Falmouth High School and fenced for both safety and access control. The scope of construction will also include a joint concession and restroom building and require an appropriation of no less than $3.1 million.
So we're not voting on it today. We'll vote on it at our next meeting. John.
I just have a request. Coach, did you say the name of the individual that's going to Shriners?
Gates Keller.
Thank you.
Nice to get a shout out.
Congratulations.
My only question is whether or not the committee specified in the request, or you might, I might have missed it, what the infill would be? Is it in there?
I can add it in.
I think it should be, since they went to all the work. Yeah.
EDPM. It is a major difference in previous projects.
It is.
Right, right, right.
It's a really good point.
And if that, and I don't want the first time, I just, yeah.
So when it goes, when the recommendation is to be acted on, it will be, it will add the EDPM on the, on the agenda. It's a great point.
I appreciate all that.
Sure.
Thank you guys all for coming. Really appreciate it and all the hard work. No small task, that's for sure.
I think it's important also to call out the work of the committee members.
Oh, that's what I missed.
Okay.
Oh, no, I mean the committee, they're doing it.
It was a lot of work. Yes.
Yeah. Shows you how invested they are.
Hey, Derek. Is Gillette, is that?
Funny how nobody wants to stay for approving the minutes. Yeah, just waiting for the, I know. All right, let's keep going, we're already behind schedule. Next up is approving our minutes from 2/27. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 27, 2018.
A second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Oh, did you go like this? Oh, sorry, okay. All in favor of approving the minutes from the 27th of February?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Me, I'm staying.
It is approved with one abstention. Next, we have report from the superintendent.
Well, you did have my report from our task force, but I just have a couple of quick things. Firstly, we rescheduled our community forum regarding school safety until April 23rd. That had been booked previously, but because of the snow days from last week, we missed all of our planning time. So that has been rescheduled. And then one more piece is, I just want to make sure that I do a thank you to the Falmouth Police and Fire Departments and to the DPW here in town for all of the help that they gave us last week in trying to get the schools up and running again. And that, you know, I pretty much spent those three days at the Falmouth Fire Department because that was the only way I could jump onto wifi. And they were very, very accommodating, I'm very appreciative. And then I save, always save the best for last. But the custodial and maintenance staff in this district is absolutely incredible and very, they were a very well-oiled machine through all of those three days. Conversations early, early in the morning, late, late at night, checking on heating and power and generators. They were outstanding in maintaining our buildings during this past storm. And so I really want to thank them for that. And also, hopefully, we won't be facing another storm coming on Wednesday and Thursday of this week. But they are an incredible crew and I owe them much gratitude.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, moving on, report from the chair. So I have lots of gratitude as well. I just wanted to publicly thank all the members of the screening committee for spending well over 20 hours, do you think?
Yep.
Over the last month, reviewing applications and meeting and interviewing and designing questions. And their commitment was really remarkable. And so John served on that committee as well, Paul Daigle, Natalie Cantolopoulos, Shannon Gallagher, Andrew Phitek, Mary Gans, Mary Harris, and Rainey Dwyer. And they cannot get enough appreciation from me. So after interviewing all weekend, they did, we did, put forth three candidates for finalist interviews. And they are Carrie Ann Quinn-Linju, Zhao, Nadine Ekstrom, and Lori Dur. And our interviews are this week. So Wednesday and Thursday, they're open to the public, which I think is really important to announce because I think people don't realize that. Wednesday at Morse Pond at 6:00? No, 7:00. Wednesday at Morse Pond at 7:00 and Thursday here at 6:00. Mark your calendar in case you don't have it. Got it. And I also wanted to thank Sharon for putting up with me for the last couple of weeks of nightmare scheduling stuff and Juwani, who's not here, for showing our candidates around over the next three days. So the three candidates are in Falmouth today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, touring all of the schools, visiting with administrators, principals, and office staff, and having a chance to get to know each other. And we'll go from there. That's all I've got. Are there any subcommittee reports?
Yep, we have a policy meeting.
Committee, that's good. Committee member reports, Sonia, we have your report. Do you want to highlight anything?
The only thing I wanted to call out, thank you, is that we had intended after the last policy meeting to hopefully have home education program, IHB, GON for First Read. So it's referenced that way in my briefing. It'll be forthcoming on the next agenda. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Sonia? And we, I had actually coordinated with Nancy to mention that Charlie and Juwani and Cindy and Zach didn't need to be here because we knew we had a really long meeting and most of it did not pertain to them. So in the interest of saving their time. Patrick, you didn't get out of it though. Anything you want to highlight?
I do. We have to give a huge thank you to the head custodians and the custodial staff of our buildings.
We did that.
Did I just walk out of the room?
That shows you're on the same page though. That was my line!
I could not do it because I pestered them on the phones constantly for three days.
It must be real.
And the folks at the fire station who we stayed with for three days.
I already said that.
It's all your thunder, sorry. Any questions for Patrick?
Patrick, you did in your write-up talk about the follow-up with the light over at Maravista.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Can you just say that out?
Yeah, sure, yeah. So the DPW has that project scheduled for, I believe, spring of 2019. And they have a sidewalk project down there. And within that project, the traffic zone light, the school traffic zone light would be moved also. So that's, that's good news, that's 2019. The bad news is what do you do on that road from now onward? We've asked the school police liaison, a 14 ticket, and the mother, and the school principal to have a conversation about whether or not there was a way to have some level of police traffic stop or presence there from time to time to begin to slow people down over there. So there's a, there's sort of, we know what the long-term solution is. Finding a short-term solution is it's public safety. It's effectively, you know, requiring the police involvement and we have made that connection.
Thank you. Any requests for agenda items or follow-up information?
I just have a comment on Zach's briefing. The Title I program review. You know, I looked that over and obviously you seem to do a lot of work to provide the information to the state. And obviously, I think title programs are extremely important. And then I look at the last sentence and the district's Title I program will again be reviewed during the school year of 23, 24. And I look at everybody and say, is there gonna be any title programs by 23, 24? And that just bugs me because we seem to cut back in areas that we're not supporting students, especially at-risk and reading programs and things of that nature, the lower-end kids. So it drives me crazy. And the school safety issue, some of the research I'm doing on school safety drives me crazy because we want to fund this, we want to fund that. Yet in school safety, there's a 36% decrease in school safety. And that would eliminate also some federal grants to schools. And if that comes down the pike, I don't know if you'll ever get to 23, 24 with any kind of grants at all. So those things I just kind of look at and it perturbs me tremendously.
Glass half-empty, Bill.
It might be in.
I know. Any other follow-ups or agenda items?
Is that future agenda item?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to put on the agenda that we move forward with reducing the parking fee. We talked about it in January and we put it out for a couple of months and we're at a couple of months. So we could do that, put that on the agenda, it'd be great.
All right. Anything else?
Yes. Future references for Charlie on McLean. If we could kind of get an update as to how McLean is supporting our kids and staff, the interaction between, just kind of an update because I know we've really got a big push on that. Obviously, everybody thinks it's extremely positive, but how is the utilization?
What it looks like, yeah. That'd be nice, that'd be really nice.
I can just add to that a little bit, that VIPS program did have McLean speak to mentors to talk a little bit about that. Yeah.
That's great.
So they're really good about trying to provide that information and feedback.
That's nice.
It goes back to what Dan, I'm sorry, I called you your brother. Philip had started the meeting with and talking about the mental health issues. And I actually really appreciate hearing that from a student. Because it's been a flag of mine for a long time. So thank you.
All right, great. Terri, can you do your thing?
I can. I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to consider applicants for employment. It is expected the school committee will not recontinue.
Can I get a second?
Second, then.
And it's a roll call vote. Walter, will you start us off?
Yeah. Yes.
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 Thank you.